Okay, welcome everybody, sorry to keep you waiting. Welcome to the Town Board Work Session on Friday, August 10th, 2018. And let's see what we have first on our agenda, let me find our agenda. We have the, why don't we start off just with the, I know we have some people here for the, well Josh is here for-
It's okay, he works here.
Yeah, that's fine.
So he's here for the direction.
But I was gonna say, let's do the sidewalk maintenance first. Because I know we have Casey from the Historic Society, Malcolm and Judy who's on the board of the Historic Society.
So.
I don't know what she's here, Jerry Porterish?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome in there. So, um, I know it's August, but I really think that we-
You have to come up with one.
Yeah, why don't you come up with one?
I really think that we need to talk about how we're going to handle sidewalk maintenance, especially in our downtown area after we've invested significant monies in our streetscape. What the board's gonna notice is that our Parking District Number One, which is outlined in what, in yellow, actually covers the majority of the downtown. And what it entails is our care and maintenance of parking lots, but also street parking and making sure that after the snow falls that the streets are clear, the sidewalks are clear so that customers can walk them. So after large snowstorms, after merchants taking clear the sidewalks, there's piles of snow on, left on the curb. DPW comes in usually early in the morning, they take with backers and they get rid of all the snow and they cart it out. Because we already handle a modest amount of sidewalk maintenance in that area, perhaps the logical progression of that should be that we undertake the care of the sidewalks in our downtown facility that our merchants and property owners within Parking District Number One are already paying for. So there's already a bond that they share the payment of for the improvements that we did to the Greeley parking lot, South Greeley parking lot. That's actually gonna be paid off in several years. And I would propose that we keep the payments basically present, not, in other words, don't wipe it off altogether, but keep some payment to property owners within this district to then convert that payment towards underwriting our care of the property. So that we have a uniform-
You're reallocating the dollars that are already there?
What he's, what she's saying is, let's say for our administration's sake, they pay 5,000 bucks a year to be part of the parking district. And we already clear the roads and parking lots on behalf of them. But they're also paying for a bond within that 5,000 dollars. That bond is going to retire in a couple of years.
Right.
So instead of taking the 5,000 down to 2,500, keep it at 5,000 and use the money-
Whatever the number is.
Yeah, whatever the number is and use the money to basically, within the parking district, have the town take over that responsibility. Have we done a budget? I thought we had talked about this last year? I can't really remember.
A while ago.
So we asked council whether or not it would fit because it wasn't, it wasn't the-
I like the idea, but I just, I think-
Yeah, and their comment was, his comment was that in fact we could do it because the sidewalk maintenance was really something that we already do at least in part. Then we would take it over. So the same way that we have the sidewalk crews that come in and go to clear our down, our train station, we would hire additional staff so that we can handle the downtown as well.
And I think Jerry Marshall will let us, supposed to go back and come up with a budget for that?
Yeah, and, and, and he will. The first thing we wanted to know is whether or not legally we could do it or do we have to take it or constitute this district? Nick feels it's within the purview of the districts that we don't have to do that, which is always a nice move. And I think that in light of the monies that the town is outlaying to improve the streetscape, having consistent and supervised maintenance of the district is the way to go. We don't want someone sitting there dumping a pile of rocks over on our brand new sidewalks and, you know.
That still doesn't answer, I don't know if Jeff did, that still doesn't answer.
Right, so, right.
And then as a secondary question, the Alex's new place potentially, or whatever he's doing here-
Well Alex is actually-
He's not in it, he's outside of it, isn't that-
He's on the other side of the parking train station.
Yeah, he's here.
So is there a way to, we wanted, can, whether we do or we don't, is there a way to expand the parking district if we wanted to?
Well, so the question is whether or not we would expand the parking district or whether or not we would create sidewalk districts that run outside of it. And so right now, we take care, the school takes care of this, library this. In front of theirs, we take care of all of ours on our side of the street coming down. And Alex just takes care of his very small section here and here.
And we can ensure consistency in terms of the proper removal methods and-
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't-
Even to the school, right?
Yeah. To the school. Yeah, corrode the sidewalks and all those like that. So we should be okay. Our sidewalk actually extends, I think right to here. This, we have curb coming in. So we're installing curving. Whether or not we can actually extend the sidewalk is going to depend upon what our budget looks like. Will we need to get some change order numbers in to see what exactly is left in our contingent to see whether or not we might be able to restore this going forward? And then the other question, that still doesn't address our King Street Hill.
Yeah, but what about, what about these here? Who maintains this?
These property owners, for the most part they're commercial property owners.
How do we ensure that they're going to do the property?
Well, that's, that's going to be the question as to whether or not the board wants to take in, create a separate sidewalk district that would maintain that.
We can't bring them into the parking district. They got to redo the boundary of the parking district.
And part of the problem is that the parking district actually enables those merchants to have seven merchant parking spots for free and we don't have the capacity, so I, I would prefer if we were going to expand the care of the sidewalks. That we actually create a-
Let's just look at this.
Historic Society is in that parking permit?
Right, is in the parking district. No, no, it's in there.
Meaning parking a district.
I'm just trying to figure out what the incremental merchants are, so really-
Like how many merchants are going in the parking district?
Right, exactly, so if you go, it's just a couple, so it's not like you're gonna have a whole lot more road to do already without any little-
Well, I know, they can't, I can't, I don't have the ability to charge for it.
The problem, the problem is also the initial merchants that were in that parking district, they essentially funded this parking lot and now the parking lot's essentially funded and now we're saying, hey, welcome to the parking district.
So create, what's the, we're creating some other, who cares what you call it?
Yeah.
No, 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 because-
The proposal is to create a sidewalk district to cover the merchants that are not currently within the parking district.
So number one, to, to get the board's buy-in to expanding or, or at least modifying the charge or incorporating within the current charge the fact that if you're within the boundaries of the parking district, any of the streetscape improvements that we have done, that the town would then maintain.
Do we have the authority to be able to make that decision on behalf of the people who are in the parking district? Like-
Yeah, that, that, that will take over-
To say that your, your payments are gonna, that, you know, when the bond payments are subset, you're gonna continue to make payments after-
Yeah, because they were continuing to make payments, they were, they were doing it anyway because they were paying for portions of snow removal on the parking lots and things like that.
Well, yeah, yeah, but it's gonna- But it's also part of what this district's supposed to be able to do, the parking district. It's not just pay for covering, cleaning the sidewalks, you know, and keeping that sort of neat and tidy. I think it's also in general maintaining all of the parking lots.
That is a question, we can't just hold someone's money and say now we're reallocating it to something else.
Right, who has the control of this parking district? Do they do it to the members?
We do.
Okay, so there's the answer. But the thing is, the only thing is, I would say if, if the cost is less, I doubt it's gonna be less. But let's assume we pay off the bond and now, now, you know, we say, okay, we're gonna keep your costs the same. It work, I don't mind if we're not collecting enough, to be honest with you, but if we're collecting too much?
No, so the, the other thing that it gets, it's supposed to be used for is O&M of the parking lots within the parking district. So for example, the idea is much like what we did with resurfacing our commuter parking lots. Is it supposed to be a-
A fund balance.
A fund balance, and that way when the parking lot needs to be done, you don't need to go out and bond for all a million, you've got the money set aside for it. So the Allen Place parking lot back here that needs to work, Siegel parking lot that needs to be resurfaced. So there, there are things, there are O&M costs to that parking district that should be properly allocated to pay for, to set money aside so that these can be restored. And frankly, you know, maybe certainly with the water main project that we had, that we have our eye on for this water main across the tracks that we're thinking about redoing, we would be redoing this Allen Place parking lot in conjunction with some of the work that's done. It needs to be resurfaced, it needs to be relined.
I, I understand, but that's why I think we need to have a budget. So if this parking district currently has a budget which is, or if it doesn't, it should then-
No, no, it, it clearly has, it clearly has a budget. And I will be asking Jerry Marshall if this is something that the board wants to, believes it's, it's on board with. I will talk to Jerry about additional staff and we will figure out how many more bodies we actually need because we're gonna need, this is very labor intensive, that's his concern.
Right, so I would like to sort of just see a full budget and then not only that, but if for example, we know that there's certain O&M things that are gonna be needed in the parking lot, like just a five-year look ahead.
Yep.
And, you know, and then the extra staff because if they're already used to paying this and we're gonna have them continue to pay it, I'd like to make sure that if we do all of this stuff and we anticipate it, that they understand what they're getting for their money and that we don't overcharge them, but we also don't undercharge them.
Well, and we need to know what that payment is, so is it actually a level payment or is it a fluctuation or an increase in terms of what the payment's going to look like?
Like you may want, we don't want to put in, well, is there going to be a burden on the merchants?
There shouldn't, it would not be our intention to do that, you know, we are, we have a 2% tax cap, so we wouldn't be seeking to, you know, we-
Well, that's why I think before we make that, that's why I think we need to have the budget. So if this is, you know, an extra hundred thousand dollars a year and it's gonna put us outside of the tax cap, then we need to know that because it's gonna have to come from somewhere else. I just don't know what that is actually gonna cost.
I don't either and I think it's going to, I, I will ask Jerry for a budget. I'm sure it requires at least one additional person, maybe two. We talked about seasonal, I don't know that seasonal works all that well.
Well, and I would also think that you would end up wanting to build up a fund balance because, you know, some years it's gonna be low, some years it's gonna be high and like it's a variable, it's like snowplow.
To refresh my recollection, and this is also legal question. We bear the responsibility, now we are the ones who are charged with taking care of the sidewalk. We bear responsibility more so or less so, or it doesn't change? If there's an injury, an accident, do we have increased insurance costs? Do you know what type of additional responsibility, both financial and insurance wise, liability wise, we encourage? Because that, even if there's not a dollar amount, well, it would be insurance wise, but here there's not a dollar amount, we have to consider that as well when we're deciding what to do.
We'd have to look, we'd have to look more into it because, you know, typically you're responsible and liable for the sidewalk, but if we're taking over responsibility that-
But the merchant says, hey, I'm not the one, the town shove, the town lays down the-
Right, right, that might increase our liability and I don't know if there's a way to put it back on the merchant if they're not responsible for the sidewalks.
So is that covered now under our policy?
It, I don't know, I'd have to look into it.
All right, so we have to get the answer to those questions?
Yeah.
So cost, liability and insurance. And that would, that would include the extension to these other sidewalk districts as well. And then that also begs the question, we never formalized a plan in terms of once snow removal has to begin and end and we have to now-
Well, that's the other part of the conversation that I want you to have with the board because even having done this, there are areas that are outside the streetscape improvements that we still need to address. The areas going up the King Street Hill, there are still sidewalks here and people still walk.
Yes, we need to deal with that in September realistically, if we want to implement something by December, January?
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I, I know that there's, that there was a lot of discussion about it and we sort of walked away from it, you know, in frustration, but I, look, somewhere, you know, 12 hours is probably too long to give someone to clear the sidewalk, 2 hours is too short. Somewhere between 6 and 8 hours is probably fair excluding 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, giving people a chance to get up and go. But I think the board really needs to consider imposing a shorter time limit than what we currently have on the books.
I agree and I also think that if we're not going to take the extension and handling all of the areas, that there needs to be enforcement and a first time warning maybe, if a little footpath that's not acceptable, but it needs to really be cleaned and cleared.
Well, but should we also be having a conversation about extending the sidewalk district up King Street Hill? All the way up to-
Right, even if it's not, right, even if it's not, okay.
Well, so-
I mean, if it's not.
Would that be a separate conversation?
So, just, just so the, the board is aware, when we take and we create a new district, we're talking about getting the buy-in from 51% of the agglorum value of the property for them to say, yes, we'll do it. So we can propose it, it doesn't need more necessarily get-
Right, but I think you can incentivize by, with a carrot and a stick. The carrot being it's not your responsibility, the stick being-
Or by saying you need to clean your sidewalk with the 2 hours, 4 hours.
Right, the stick being the enforcement if you fail to do so.
And, well, does the board want to do that? Because it is a, it is going to be a financial hit, no matter what it is, to the residents up the street who are in the sidewalk district just because, I mean, it's gonna be an additional fee that they're, they're not paying now. The parking district's already paying a fee, so it's, you know-
Well, one way or another, maintain property-
But if we can't even determine what the-
Yes.
Right, but it's a fee for service, but we don't even know what the burden is until we have a budget.
Right, but I-
So I mean, it's sort of like, you know, and it can be divided not by parcel size, but it can be divided by linear feet and those-
It's, no, it's, it's gonna be a-
Or is it agglorum division?
Yeah, it's gonna be a-
Okay, that's fine.
Let me ask you another question, this is a legal, legal, legal question is, if we know that there's particular, if we know there's particular materials, if that's the right word, that damage this type of streetscape and the, making up the salt can't, regular salt can't fuse, you know. Can we statistically identify the types of materials that can be put down on our sidewalks? In the event that those don't want to buy into it, we don't want them to be putting materials down that are gonna be coercive or aggressively coercive. So is it, can we, can we, sorry, pardon the net coercive, we don't want anyone coercing anyone. Is there ways we can do that if they don't want to buy in to make sure that we don't have a beautiful downtown that's maintained because it's the right materials and then outside of it, it's in three years' time, four years' time, it's swung apart?
Right, so we could put that in the local law when we-
So we can, we can legislate it.
Um, enforcement might be a problem. How do you, you know, see who put it down, you know, that, that's something to consider, but it should be something we can put, we can legislate and put in the local law.
Well, it's all just part of the carrot and stick analysis of trying to figure out how we can make this best for residents, tenants, merchants, et cetera.
Right, yeah, to your, answer your question, yes, we can do that.
Just on an agglorum basis, residential properties, since they're not commercial businesses, are probably taxed at a higher rate than commercial properties?
If it's based on value, everybody's assessed.
Right, but it's, but the thing is, when you do the assessment on a commercial property, aren't you doing it on an income basis?
Well, there's different methodologies.
Different methodologies, right. So I'm just sort of saying is that if you've got, for example, a quarter of an acre and you've got 50 feet on the road versus somebody who's, and you're assessed at the residential value versus a business which is assessed on an income basis, correct?
But it's still the value of that property.
I know, I know it's the taxable value, it's not necessarily, it's actually usually on the income basis a little bit lower. They may have 150 feet, so the real work, I'm-
Yeah, so she's concerned about the disparity between commercial and residential. If we're taking in, using agglorum as a way to assess what the charges are gonna be in, in a new streetscape, you know, sidewalk district.
And it may actually, is what I'm thinking, it's more-
Maybe we should do different ones?
Different ones, just to look and see what the end is.
That's interesting, okay.
So you can do it based on the square footage of the lot and the linear frontage?
Maybe we have a downtown versus a King Street Hill?
And then there's a formula in between that's, and that would protect against that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm trying to say, because I can explain.
So we need to talk about this, how, how we do the agglorum. So just so that you know, so the Historical Society is actually within, squarely within the parking district? So whatever you're paying now would, would be, would cover our maintenance of the new sidewalk that's being put in? That we had talked, remember we had, we had talked about this a little bit earlier?
Yeah.
I just want to bring up a couple of points. One is, and this might be your carrot and stick help you. Since we, King Street is a state road, it's very hard and much more expensive to try to do repairs. On like, we experienced that. And so if you have to repair your sidewalk and your curb, because it's a state road, it's much more expensive and much more difficult to do.
They use statewide permit.
So you use statewide, which is very difficult, we tried to do it. It's very, Cassie, for more than a year, I think, tried to do it. So I mean, that could also be an incentive for someone to want to have this, the town take it over. Because if you have to try to do that yourself, it causes the repairs to be a lot more expensive as well as it to make it much more difficult even to find someone to do the repairs.
It's much easier for us to do.
It's much easier, so that might be another incentive for someone to want to pay, you know, more for that. The other thing I just wanted to highlight is, it's wonderful that the town is doing this new streetscape and the new sidewalks, but those are all much more expensive materials. So if you leave it to the residents, you are raising, or the businesses, you are raising their costs. And in our case, you expanded the size of our maintenance responsibility quite significantly. And we're a non-for-profit organization, so that's why, that was one of our concerns because, you know, we're, you know, we're nonprofit. At, at no, at not our request, you're giving us now a much bigger maintenance responsibility. And I think you, I don't know if some of the other merchants even realize that that's happening to them, to tell you the truth. So you might want to talk to them about that because they may not realize that now, how you've changed the streetscape, that their, their maintenance is going to be more. Because you're dealing with more expensive materials and bigger spaces. But anyway, I mean, and I'm just saying, it's, you know, maybe to them it doesn't matter, like, you know, where the restaurant is on-
All right, so they're getting twice as much seating area outside of the restaurant we're paying for it, so definitely.
But yeah, I mean, it is a cost that people, you know, have to be aware of. And the only other thing I want to highlight again is, it always seems to be that at our corner, and I know this is gonna have to be changed, but I just want to bring it up in this meeting, is that they seem to dump, when they remove snow, they pile it up on the corner of Center Street, even onto our property and, you know, that's, the town is gonna have to come up with a different way of where they're going. They can't pile up snow there anymore.
Well, that's not gonna be there anymore.
I know, but just, you know, again, we just want to make sure that that's brought up, that that has been an issue in the past and it shouldn't happen anymore, but, you know, they're, they're gonna have to think about what they're gonna do now. I'm, you know, just a different approach, so, anyway. And we appreciate that you're considering-
We're clearly gonna have to figure it out, well, where are the others?
They don't want to dump it, they don't want to dump it. It doesn't, it doesn't, we'll move us to dump it there, especially after we have to-
No, 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 but, and we appreciate that the, you know, town is considering this. I, I would think personally, this, you know, you're spending so much money making the town look great that you would want to try to maintain a uniformity in repairs and maintenance for, for everybody's sake. So I think this would be a wonderful, you know, benefit.
So I think I'm a little bit confused about Parking District One. So right now you do have responsibility to clear and take care of sidewalks or no, just the parking lots?
So we take care of the parking lot, but also after major snows, when there's snow piled up, like between, like at the curb, like you've, you know, you have nowhere to put it, you put it on the curb side, DPW comes down and we remove it in the middle of the night and take care of it when, you know, major snows. So we sort of use that as a hook to allow us to expand our role within the parking district to maintain them completely. Because that way we could protect our investment and we sort of, we take the burden off of, you know, residents, especially like non-for-profits that, you know, we expanded their, you know, their frontage or whatever it is and we'll take care of it now. We know how hard it's been for you, like we're putting in granite curving for basically the very reason that you're, you know, that you have had such issues with the concrete curving just crumbles. And it gets, it gets, it gets killed by the snowplows and just salt and-
Snowplows are a major part of it.
At least in front of our property, I know the drainage is gonna change slightly because right now, just during the rainstorm, it just comes down, the whole hill just empties at the bottom of our property, so.
And that's the part of-
I think that's gonna change a little bit, the way it's come down.
Yeah, the curve is going to change and the drains are there and, yeah. Slowly, but surely moving that drainage project forward. It's going to get better.
Are we good?
So, but when, when do you think it's a reasonable time to expect kind of a budget or scenario which is part of the digital?
Well, we're doing, we've just started budgets now, so I'm actually meeting with staff-
Oh, so he'll make this part of the budget process?
Yeah, that's why I want to make a conversation with you now because it's sort of, the timing was right.
Right, okay, cool.
Okay. All right, anything else on this? And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask council to, to take and prepare legislation so that we can talk about it again in September as far as the, you know, time within which, the budget and also these additional streetscape sidewalk districts and what they might look like.
Yeah, I wonder if we can call it instead of a parking district, and I, you know, behind schedule, I don't want to get too much into this, I wonder if we can give it like a better name? Like if we change it into like a business improvement district or something like that? They could make it a little more like-
That has a specific meaning.
Yeah, so, um-
Something a little better than parking district. Because now maintaining sidewalks and stuff and, and brand new sidewalks, it's like, it's not just about parking.
Right, I mean, this is just our internal taxing designation because that's, you know, that was the section of law under which it was created. You know, we can call it whatever when we take and figure out what we're doing with these.
And to make sure that it makes sense to do it. And I also think that whatever the name is should be like a business maintenance district or something like that, that the name should reflect the work. I don't think it should be gussied up to be anything other than a simple description of what it is.
But it's not just a parking district.
Right, 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 no, no, no.
You're maintaining sidewalks and, and new business entrepreneurs should know that there's either a business improvement district or maintenance district or something that's actually, it's, it's important for them, especially if it's gonna have that tax bill.
Right, and again, you know, I'm hesitant to do the part-time seasonal help. I don't think that, you know, you get a commitment from people and so the question's gonna be, you know, what do we do with all that additional staff on the off-seasons? But I think that there's enough plantings that need to be taken care of and I think the downtown in general needs to have people taking care of it swept, cleaned, you know, properly maintained, it makes a difference and it's very labor intensive, so this, this may work out well.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute.
What's up?
Crap, sorry, I just, uh-
Okay, you're good.
Wow, nothing to do with you guys, I just had, like, I realized I made a commitment, I have a commitment.
Okay, all right, we'll talk fast.
All right, here we go, an additional one, an additional one.
All right, now, okay, um, let's go to, Josh is here, let's, you wanna talk just a little bit about the local law regarding tax assessment, the county of promotion?
Certainly, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
So this local law is being proposed for future development. And it would inhibit any savvy people from turning as-built construction, mainly apartments or townhouses into a condominium. And what this does is it protects the taxpayers from the condo exemption, which I'm mandated to value these as income-producing properties. So for example, and this wouldn't affect Riverwoods, where Riverwoods units typically selling for a million to a million two, they have a value on the roll between 400 and 600,000. So they're getting a automatic exemption by that valuation method, so that would prevent that from happening. It's a, it's probably a good complement to the comprehensive plan that was taken as far as sustained growth and smart growth, but also being able to maintain the town's role in the future.
I, I support this, but I actually have a question that I think probably should be done in executive session in regards to this.
Oh, kewkie, so hold that thought. Maybe in between work session and our town board meeting, we'll just go into a quick executive.
Quick one.
So we can take care of that, okay?
Are we going, I have-
What you need to do right now?
No, we don't need to do it right now, we're not voting on this right now.
We were just gonna set a public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing is completely fine. And I can, and we don't have to do it, even if the public hearing is in September, you can, we can have an email exchange, we don't have to do that as it relates to this, but, but do you have a question?
Okay.
Are the lawyers on it, privileged?
Thank you.
All right.
Great.
Okay, Josh, thanks.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay.
Do you want to jump, since there's no one else that needs to be here, can we jump? Just because I have to make sure about like 10:05, 10:10, about the administrative code that I was referencing from New York City and the revenge porn.
Ah, yes.
And Judy, are you here for another issue?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Douglas Road.
Which one?
Oh, then, let's do Douglas Road first, I apologize, go ahead.
We have to get Sabrina back for that anyway. So we can start this, why don't you go ahead and text Sabrina and tell her to come up?
Okay. Okay, so, so New York- Okay. So, so, New York State doesn't have a revenge point statute. And New York City, interestingly enough, does. It's administrative code, it's only a misdemeanor. But the important thing is that it exists, and it prevents someone from, at time one, having a consensual picture, whether it's a selfie, whether it's intimate or sex act, that's consensual. At time one, it's okay and fine, and at time two, it's used, we use the term nefariously, to hurt someone financially, hurt someone emotionally, hurt someone in their business. And it's, for lack of a better term, insane that it doesn't exist. I mean, I don't know if anyone is even aware that there's been some issues. Anyone reads the New York Post was running with the story about a doorman in the city who was sending pictures of his penis to random women in the building, and there was no law to really deal with it. And the police said they weren't gonna arrest him because it wasn't aggravated harassment. The statute doesn't really work that well. There's just so many things that you can't go after him for, there's only so many laws, and there's a real hole. So, the question becomes, yes, this is Newcastle, it's probably not nearly as big of an issue, but I think that you would be surprised to know how many times even kids take pictures and share things that even if consensual at time one, aren't consensual at time two when they post things, but more so for an adult. And it would serve multiple purposes. One, it would prevent it from happening here, even though, again, you don't hear about it, in part you don't hear about it probably because there's no recourse. And then number two, it would really get some energy behind either the county or the state following the legislation in New York City and criminalizing what is vile and putrid behavior where, I mean, it is, where you do something consensually, whether you might agree with it or not as a third party. Again, whether it's a selfie or you're having, filming yourself intimately with another person. And it ends up online, on Instagram, it ends up on Tumblr, Reddit, whatever it may be, and it's populating Google, because every time the search goes through, it's picking up these websites, and it's problematic. So, I provided a copy of the administrative code, of the New York City Administrative Code, which is pretty, they did a pretty good job. It establishes a civil course of action. It has a criminal course of action, but I think this is not just symbolic, but it certainly shows that Newcastle is in the front of this. And I do believe in the next year to three years, you're gonna have this legislated on a state level. It's shocking that it's not on the county level. And it does provide recourse. So you should understand that we, as a municipality, as I'm sure everyone does know, has the ability to grant all local laws that are misdemeanor-level and bound, and violations. I think that this is, let me take that back. I unequivocally believe that even if it's never used, letting people know that this is a crime or can be a crime is a phenomenal message to young people and adults, whether they are a jolted ex-lover, an affair, or whatever it may be, that you cannot do this conduct because there will be criminal results. Or at a minimum, set you up for civil exposure in a lawsuit. So, I, again, provided this, and I think it's worthy of discussion, even, hopefully it's never, not, it never used, but it's something worthy for review. So, I don't know if anyone's any thoughts?
All I would say is that chances are, hopefully it's never is used. My only point was that if we are gonna do it, and I have no problem doing it, I just think it should be part of a broader education of like bullying and things like that, so that, you know, if we're gonna enact, take the time to enact a statute that may never be used, at least we get the education out there, and, because that will be, you know...
Part of, I think, part of the acting, even us having a forum on this, in a public discussion about it won't create education, but...
But a broad, broad context, not just that, just not bullying in general, and this is one throng of it, sort of.
Absolutely. I completely, I completely agree. And keep in mind, for some people might be worried, well, I don't want my fifteen-year-old getting in trouble for this and getting arrested. There's statutes on the books and the law, you know, when someone's a juvenile, youthful offender, so it's not as if everyone's treated equally, especially with crazy age coming down the pike as well. But you would be surprised. I have dealt with professionally, ninth grade and junior high, getting involved in this type of behavior, where the school deals with it internally and does whatever they do, but adults with regularity, so...
Wouldn't the sharing of images of children be covered under child pornography law already? So this really just...
Yes, but, yes, but no.
...address the gap for adults.
Yes, but no, but this defines what you define as a child, right? But to me, you know, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen is still, you know, an eighteen-year-old, for example, is a child, but it's not a child. So you still wanna educate people, and remember that the person who was here today in Newcastle, especially a person who could very well, could very well be in, could very well be in, going to college at Syracuse, Michigan, moving on to a...
I don't know, I think people, I think this ability to share images instantaneously, and somebody's having too much to drink, or they're doing whatever, and they're mad because they've had a breakup, I think it should totally be there. I can say Newcastle, we're different, we're above that. No, everybody's, people are people, humans are humans. You have enough to see what's going on on a larger level in this country, to see people sometimes don't act rationally.
The point I wanna make, though, is that...
It's just something slow to little things.
The point I wanna make is, the point I wanna make is that you may not, I said you, we may not hear of a lot of things, but it happens. When there's no recourse for it, people don't know what to do. And they, it's something that they pay, they pay off, they ignore it, they, you know, it's...
They feel shame.
It's, absolutely, the goal is to shame, so I don't see it as a slippery slope. No one's getting, you know, if it is a young person, there are different laws in terms of how young people are treated. But God forbid, God forbid, someone, somehow, even if it's, they somehow hack your, get access to your Wi-Fi and they're into your network, and they get an image of you and they post, I don't wanna say you, but anyone, you're, you're, but you should look at it, in terms of, if it's me or you or your daughter or your son...
No, 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 I agree. I think there's merit to it, I just think that sometimes enforcing it, you also have the other side of somebody who puts an image out there with consent, and then later on kinda says, oops, maybe I shouldn't have done that, and then can just say, oh no, you didn't have my consent, and then try to bring some up on charges when it wasn't...
That's the discretion of the district attorney, and there are probably examples where, you know, extreme examples, you could say that a man or woman claims that a rape occurred that never happened, and they, just because they're unhappy. They can claim the picture was put because they're unhappy. You have to allow the criminal justice system within reason, meaning a district attorney to make that determination whether or not it's a viable case, whether there's probable cause, whether there's credibility, look at veracity of those, you know, so you have to give them the tools. You can't just say, and I don't think you're saying it anyway, but you can't just say, because of the potential slippery slope, we don't wanna touch it.
Right, no, I'm just putting it out there as a discussion.
Any type of criminal offense, you could argue that this situation. This also allows someone potentially to get an order of protection, you know, to stop. There's so many assets used to something like this, even if it's never, pardon me, even if it's never used, and let the state come in and take control eventually, or the county come in and pass the legislation. So, that's my...
The other thing, it's just in the really minimal research I tried to do on this, in advance of this meeting. My understanding is that at the state, this was withering because of outside pressure from Google?
Among other, among other things, the internet, yes, among other things, the providers, the webs, they don't wanna bear any liability, but...
I just, I wonder if, if the intent is for us to pass something locally so that we can make a statement that helps bolster either the county or the state's sort of political will and imperative to get this done, I wonder if we're going to be able to have that intended effect if what's preventing them is a funded entity like Google?
I am overwhelmingly confident, overwhelmingly confident. It's not if, but when. The law is just simply not there, is not caught up to the reality of technology and today's behaviors. It simply doesn't exist. Not you personally, but you would be naive to think that in a couple of years from now, the laws, sex extortion-type things, I mean, there's no protection in the law, or it's minimal. These are gonna exist. I think it's gonna exist, it's gonna happen. So, it's a message, especially if the municipality starts to do their own, but forget the message, at least it affords people protection, affords you protection. And you'd be, again, naive to think that this stuff is not being shared consensually now, and then something goes bad, it doesn't get, I'm posting it, I'm emailing it, I'm sharing it. It's gonna go viral. It happens a lot, a lot, so...
I mean, the concern would be that, I don't wanna make it come across as like we have this major problem in our town, and, you know, I would want it to be framed that we're being progressive about it, it's bullying. I know I said this already, and I don't mean to beat it dead horse, but it's more about bullying, this is one little component to it, 'cause I just don't want it, I don't want it to seem like we have this huge problem in our town.
Well, and the fact is, the fact is, we don't, that I'm aware of, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. I haven't heard of it locally, no one, but, again, who's gonna share it? Who's gonna come out and say, say...
I understand, but this is gonna come across as like that we have this big problem, and that's why we...
Or that, or that we think it's important, yeah, or that we think it's important, it hasn't...
I think it's just proactive and protective, and kind of being ahead of the curve in terms of...
Yeah, I don't know.
Giving residents, so I can rethought, though, you wanna kind of frame it as part of the anti-bullying.
It's an issue that should be dealt with at the state level, or at the county level.
Yeah, but when is that gonna, when is that gonna happen? And New York City as municipality did it, we're a significantly larger municipality, exponentially larger municipality. So, I don't, we don't have to resolve it today, I just wanted to, I appreciate it being on the agenda, we can figure it out, but I think it's something that's important, and it's gonna happen, not if, but when, in my view. I think we should be in front of it. I see it because of the nature of my practice and what I do. I see it with regularity, with regularity, significant regularity.
I'd always start with a letter to, I'm not saying we don't do it, I always start with a letter to the county executive and ask him to do it on the county level, maybe, and then, just to start with that, not to say that's what we ended.
But I, I don't object to that, but I also think that we should move this forward unless unequivocally you would not want this in Newcastle.
I don't, I'm not against it, I'm just afraid the way it's gonna come across, and I'd rather be part of a broader thing, which is like, I like being progressive, but I'd just rather be progressive as broad as possible, as opposed to one incident, because there's a lot of different types of incidents where this comes into play.
So then, so then my suggestion would be if we can brainstorm and look at other statutes and other types of ways that cyberbullying could be attacked, addressed, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's important.
As part of the larger package, but this legislation is there for a reason, because it's a problem that was not without, without a recourse, not a way to remedy the issue.
I would be on board looking at it as part of, I don't know, a broader package of cyberbullying and other types of...
To commit suicide, I guess, events of...
Right, exactly. And that's what causes...
So, either way, then, what I'd ask is we can split this on for September, and we can discuss, and maybe I'll present more, do some more homework on some other ideas.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just wondering if we, are there other areas that there are gaps in the legislation?
I, I'm happy to...
I'm just wondering if we, we talk to Lieutenant Carroll, or we speak to Newcastle United for Youth, and just see if they're...
I think definitely should, you know, and just sort of...
We could absolutely incorporate as many people, I'd go check.
In fact, if Newcastle, Newcastle United for Youth wanted to get on board with this and, yeah, and propose additional ways to do that, but also propose support for it and education, I think that would be a good way to attack it.
Because I think the anti-bullying and the substance abuse sort of...
Even this conversation makes it, puts it on notice, people on notice. Although, puts them on notice that there's no law right now that really can hit them, at least from a criminal perspective, so... Alright, thank you.
Alright, sidewalks on Douglas?
Thank you for being patient.
So, uh...
Sidewalk sentence?
Well, let me, I'll just give a little brief, Sabrina's here, but a brief background, and I ask that this go on the agenda. A lot of people have, you know, we all want sidewalks, we know that. Building sidewalks on state roads have gotten, got it a lot harder over the years with the taking requirement and the snowshelf and blah, blah, blah. The more sidewalks we have coming into town, the better. Douglas is a town road. You know, the sidewalk on 120 has been a huge success, people use it all the time. And, but I know that we're doing a sidewalk analysis, and, like anything else, it's complicated. There's wetland issues and steep slope issues and all the other stuff, so...
I mean, I think it would be useful for you to provide an update about the sidewalk feasibility analysis that you guys have started and where that's at.
Sure, so, so we're at the beginning stages of that. We're identifying existing sidewalks, trying to identify with that connections, whether it be a town park, a school, a business district. Really trying to identify whether our sidewalks, what type of roads they're on, what are the environmental conditions of those roads. For example, you know, understanding that Douglas has come up several times by certain town board members in the community, you know, we did a quick kind of look, if you will, using our tools to determine, you know, the width of road, what is surrounding it, and there are steep slopes, there are wetlands, you know, the width of road would be such that, you know, it may be, of course, it can be done, you know, we have the, we have the technology to, you know, construct sidewalks with walls and other devices along Douglas. But the question then becomes, how many residents are we serving with this sidewalk as opposed to, you know, continuing a connection from the commercial center of Millwood to Gedney? You know, those are the things that we're trying to get more information for you as the town board to prioritize where you'd like to see sidewalks constructed. So, my estimate was that by November-ish, we'd have a better sense to show you some mapping of where these, these neighborhood, the neighborhoods, the connecting, the public places of value are in relation to existing sidewalks, and where you potentially may wanna do additional sidewalks. Douglas is definitely on the radar because of the chatter about Douglas and its proximity to the downtown. So it will be identified along with a host of other connections that have been talked about. And ultimately, you know, engineering feasibility analysis, preliminary analysis, final analysis has been done and can be done by my office, by the Town Engineering Department. The question is, where would you like us to focus? All of this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, you know, we said we'd go forward and do a sidewalk analysis. You know, that's kind of where we are, in trying to identify where, to give you materials to identify the priorities from your perspective as to where you'd like us to focus our energies, develop budgets, and then consider for future budget years. Or, in the alternative, go out to consultants to do the analysis.
Yeah, I mean, so I reached out to Sabrina a couple of weeks, maybe even months ago at this point, about Douglas sidewalks. And, I mean, basically, if I'm kind of paraphrasing the conversation that you and I had, you basically said, you know, we could stop everything in terms of the feasibility analysis and divert our attention to Douglas, if that is the direction that the board wanted us to go in. Or we can continue down the path, you guys can hold off for a few months until we've got this sort of preliminary analysis of what our options are, and then the board can, at that juncture, decide Douglas is a priority. But have, we would be able to compare that against other options within town. And so, you know, my feeling is that, you know, given the timeline that you've put forward, it makes sense for us to have that information, have the conversation about Douglas within the context of what other options exist within the town and those sort of feasibility there.
Right, and that is correct. And, you know, part of, part of this is creating all of that documentation up to preliminary engineering drawings, then make it a viable funding application. And, you know, and that relates directly to Mogo and that sidewalk. But again, I say to you, is that a priority for you because it involves a twenty percent match for a budget commitment? And so what I always like to do is think about how we could obtain outside funding, so it's not part of the taxpayer's budget, and that we can, we can maximize the dollar, and so...
So I wanna break the Mogo conversation separate from the Douglas Road conversation, and Mogo will be next, because Jeremy has to go, and I want him to weigh in on this, or he wants to weigh in on this, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so it's completely...
So my feeling on Douglas Road is, when I read, we'll bring it back to Mogo, when I read Mogo's trail plan and their sidewalk plan, I just thought, wow...
Separate, they were separated.
But I actually, I looked at that document, I said, God, I wish we had that. So if you're working on a similar document that's gonna help lay out what our options are for future connectivity between our parks and our hamlets and this thing and so forth, I am thrilled, and I don't wanna do anything until...
Yeah, I think we need all the information. It wouldn't be responsible to just focus on one road simply because, I mean, while it's important and we may need sidewalks on there, it's a...
It is one of those areas.
It is one of those areas we wanna consider. I think we need all the information before we can make a decision.
The thing is, I agree that we should get all the information, do the complete analysis, but I also think when you do any analysis, you should put higher priority on those sidewalks that would lead to our business districts. Because at the end of the day, not only is it consistent with the comp plan, but we are dealing with a changing, you know, world, and vocability is part of keeping these towns alive, not just our little town. And walkability is, is part of keeping these towns alive, not just our little town, towns all over the place. And, you know, I mean, this is not just a, this isn't the same conversation that we would have had 30 years ago. This is a conversation now of how do you deal, compete with the internet and creating walkability is, is how you do that. And I just don't think all sidewalks are created equal in that respect.
I'd like to sort of say, not just walkability, I think sort of connectivity without using a car.
Well, getting, you're right, getting people to the downtown business...
Oh, multi-use pathways.
Agreed.
Yes, that one, maybe?
It's sort of like top of the bag. Top of the bag.
Top of the bag, do ya? I think she makes up this position.
Alright, so you think for another couple of months, Sabrina?
Well, we're working on the preliminary identification now and, you know, I'm thinking by the end of October, we should have a solid foundation for you to start looking at.
Okay, that's great.
You know, and, and Rob's identifier of focus on the business areas really helps us streamline down a lot of that work.
That just be, I mean, listen, as much as I would love connectivity, but that would just meet my suggestion, but as much as having connectivity from Gedney to, I'm sorry, from Millwood Business District to Gedney Park and how incredible that sounds and everybody wants that, quite honestly, I mean, I, I know that's not gonna sound popular to say, but I, I, I think having connectivity to the business district is more important. And it's not like there's so much traffic generating from Gedney. I mean, the point is, I guess you could have people in Gedney who want to go to the business district and then it makes sense. But that should be the focus, is getting people to our business districts.
I would add schools to that too, I think.
Well, and there, there are, you know, there's a section, I think, near the West Orchard School where there's a sidewalk up that driveway. You know, and if you look at just that Millwood hamlet to West Orchard, how fantastic to connect the West Orchard sidewalk to the Millwood Business District where it is today. You're go, you know, you're right there by Gedney, you're bringing people to the hamlet and you're connecting them to the other side of that hamlet, so...
And don't forget there's the trail at the top of West... Right, exactly, but don't forget from there, you can cut across and go up that road and connect it to the prune sanctuary.
Correct, I, I mean, so it's, there is a ton of connectivity, but you know, putting it, you know, putting it in perspective because you'd have to, you, you would prioritize, you know, what are your top picks, what are your secondary picks?
But I look forward to that document.
Do you want to start, or I want to start?
Yeah, let's go.
I think we'll comment, and this is, I own property on Douglas Road and not to be Debbie Downer, but I would like to know as a resident what property I may be losing. I have a historic home, I have big old trees in the front. And I'm sorry, this would be a major issue, I, I think walkability is great, I walk on Douglas Road myself. But, you know, it could have a major impact on my little, you know, these property... No, I, well, I don't know where it's gonna be, I don't know where it's gonna be, do you know what I'm saying? I'm just saying...
It makes no sense at all.
But I think the point, the reasonable question, whatever it is you want to know.
Yeah.
Definitely, right.
Part of, of examining the feasibility of a sidewalk is assessing what it does to individual properties. So, you know, we have something called zoning compliance. And if taking, you know, five feet beyond the right-of-way on a single-family property is going to affect its zoning compliance, we need to work through that. And there are legal procedures and processes, you know, and, and honestly...
If you wouldn't take property just to take, there would be significant analysis done before, we need to propose that.
I know, but like I, I was looking at my, you know, just go out and look in front of my house with my neighbor and like, okay, where would a sidewalk go here compared to, yeah, compared to like looking at the sidewalk that they put in, which is very, you know, great already, I just, so I mean, that is, as a homeowner, I have, I have a, it's not that I don't want it, I'm just trying to figure out how, how it would work. And also as a homeowner that had the town come and take a tree off my property with no permission and with no, you know, already once before, and then I had to bear all the costs, I'm sorry, you know, the majority of the cost to fix all of it, you know, that's an issue to me, okay? So, I just, you know, want people to be aware that if you, I understand the need for the town, I think it'd be great, there could be a sidewalk, but you do have people that, and you know, my house is from 1790, that there's a lot of historic homes on that street, so I just think it's something that, you know, you should be, yeah, just think about.
Okay, thank you, take care.
Let's do Mogo, do Mogo.
I understand.
Let's do what?
Mogo. So, there's actually, so, one of the things that's before the board today is authorization to approve the Mogo plan. So, copies of it are in the agenda packet. And so, yeah, adopt Mogo, and so, Sabrina, do you want to talk a little bit about what you've been doing with Millwood and this ongoing collaboration that we're doing together?
Have a good day. Sure, so Mogo stands for the Millwood, Millwood, Austining, Go. The town and village of Austining, Westchester County and the town of Newcastle have met on several different occasions to discuss trailway connections, pedestrian connections, sidewalks, bike lanes, leading from the village to the town. This, this effort really was driven by the town of Austining because we have the North County Trailway, Millwood is right there, they reached out to us. We have had, you know, a handful of meetings to talk about this. We joined on to a grant, a supported grant that they had submitted to obtain funding for Westchester County to put this together. You know, the county put together different map, mapping routes. We spoke with a couple of bike organizations that cover that area, they participated in feedback. We had a couple of public meetings where the public weighed in on different route analysis, the need for the, for the different scenarios. And New York State DOT came to the table and did a feasibility analysis. So, so this document just sets forth our desire to build on connections and trailways and cycling routes where we can achieve them and working together to do so.
So, the report...
But what we're being asked to approve is that small connection of Route 100.
You are being asked to do two things, you are being asked to adopt this plan, which is consistent with our comprehensive plan, so that we can say we support Mogo.
Yeah, and we've been working with it and, you know, we supported the Mogo grant, so I don't think anybody...
Exactly.
Okay, so you're gonna issue it then?
Yeah, well, what did, the policies that this plan are consistent with your comprehensive plan policy.
I think it's completely...
But, but this is limited in its geographic area to that.
But that doesn't commit us financially to anything.
No, 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 this commits you to good policy.
My principal belief was we're supporting your concept, yes.
This is good policy, it's a policy you've seen before, a policy you have for Newcastle.
Alright, sounds good, so, there is gonna be a resolution in the works, in the town board packet that we...
Do you have, do you have the resolution now?
To approve this?
Let me, I mean, I, I, I'm happy to join in that before I leave, if you want to do that resolution or no.
No, no, because we have to call, board meeting, don't we, like?
You can do it in the work session?
Yeah, every, I think everybody's in a agreement that we don't have to talk to them.
We could do it in the work session.
So, in terms of the analysis, before we go, because I think we need to have this discussion. We can adopt that as policy, but are we also making a commitment at this juncture to...
No.
So we just need to adopt policy?
Correct.
All good.
So, I'm, I'm...
But you want to discuss the, what's on the table with the Austining right now and what they want us to do? Because that's time sensitive in terms of signing up to the grant.
On the grant application, this is what she wants to think of it.
And, and I can update you on that.
Yeah.
So, last Thursday, maybe, Tuesday, Wednesday, sometime, you know, mid to late last week, I received a call from Dana Levenburg and Victoria Cafarelli of the town of Austining. They asked if we would be willing to join on a TAP grant. It's a state, New York State DOT grant for, you know, that a, that one of the connections that DOT had, had identified in their feasibility, in sidewalk feasibility analysis, they were setting forth an approach to fund one of those connections. They wanted to write a grant application, wanted to know if the town would support it. I said, well, it's kind of the last minute, the deadline is next week. I said, it's, it's kind of the last minute, you know, we would need to do more analysis. We haven't even looked into from staff level, you know, what this means in regards to how many properties, blah, 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 blah. I said, but that's not really my decision if we need to focus attentions on this. You know, I'd wait to hear, you know, from my administrator after conversations with the town board. Dana reached out to Rob and that started all of your emailing back and forth. Since then, you know, Bob and I put together a budget. We've identified kind of the down and dirty, this is what we think it would take. We prepared the budgets which have been shared with you, all of the information we prepared has been shared with you. The question is whether or not you're willing to support a grant application at this point, which commits you to a 20% match. I believe we looked at a $3.23 million project and that has a lot of space in it to deal with property acquisition issues and kind of all of the things that we did, have not had time to explore in relation to sidewalk feasibility. Or it's a $3.8 million, I have the numbers right here, $3.8 million.
I don't think it's a sidewalk, it's a bike lane.
It's a, it's a bike lane which requires a relocation of certain sidewalks.
Not within Newcastle's portion.
Not within Newcastle, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm staying...
Sabrina, just, just to go back, it commits us to a 20% match, I think, up to $500,000.
Yes.
Anything over that, we're 100% responsible for.
No, 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 the grant, the grant cannot exceed $5 million.
Right, so...
So, so our, our, our match is half of 20%.
20%?
Yes.
Okay, but then if there's anything over that, like it could cost more money because we have to take property and it costs more than that, we're 100% responsible for that, right?
Correct, correct.
Well, we don't spend the grant. That's pretty much what it, correct, you don't have to spend the grant if you're awarded it.
We're still committed to...
No, so, let's let it be, let's wait a minute, let's be...
There's never a grant to begin funding.
Well, if it becomes financially unfeasible, it's financially unfeasible. So my feeling on this is, let's be sure the estimates that Sabrina has given us is on the high end because I believe the estimates that Austining gave us were substantially lower. So I'm gonna say you're the conservative estimate, so there's...
Because Austining...
Yeah, yeah, yes.
No, they have it.
Okay, and that our...
It's on the table today.
Hold, I have, the 17th, and our grant...
She's on vacation.
The grant, I, we need to give the go-ahead for this.
Alright, and our, I understand that, but our portion is the portion that's in Newcastle, which is approximately one-third of that, and that we are responsible for 50% of that one-third. So I don't understa, the numbers that you submitted, I don't believe are reflective of what our commitment is. And even the numbers that you submitted is, our, our exposure is $387,000.
Let me tell you what we came up with...
I understand, I just looked at the...
Oh, let Sabrina, let Sabrina, I want to hear Sabrina.
Yeah, so, so, New York State DOT gave the town clerk in the town of Austining a, a verbal analysis that this segment from the town of Austining to Route 100 in Newcastle would cost $1.8 million, okay? That is just based on the length and what it would take to improve the roadway for a bike lane. It did not consider any environmental condition of that length. It did not consider acquisition of property and it did not consider engineering design. Or it was a construction cost only, okay? When Bob and I reviewed the project and we started thinking about 22 properties, what have we experienced with survey costs, with, with appraisal costs on other of our projects, we bumped up that construction number to $2.3 million. We then added on, based on our costs, what those costs would be. The only standard with the assumptions in the construction cost that, that we were uncomfortable with is they did an engineering contingency of 8%. Minimum use by our town and as recommended by our town engineer is 10%. So we bumped up the numbers so we were comfortable...
No, no, I understand, but it's still...
No, no, I'm explaining, with those estimates, which is why we're at a 2.3 construction cost and we added everything else on top of that. And we included a pre-scoping process in here of, I think, 200,000 or of 100,000 so that we could investigate zoning compliance on all those property, on the 22 properties that we identified as potentially needing more land than what was in the right-of-way. Okay, so if you were to say to me, do I feel pretty comfortable at 2.3 based on what we looked at, yes.
Does that include the cost of taking of property?
No, the 2.3 is the construction cost, okay? I do not, I'm not an appraiser by any way, shape or form. I, I have not fully investigated this. We based off those appraisal numbers, based off of what we knew to be true in other projects.
That, I, I feel like you made a fairly, what I'm gonna say is a full budget.
Yes.
And that really what the potential exposure is, is based on your analysis, is 387,500.
Based on my analysis?
Based on your analysis, you're in Bob's, he always answers, which is the...
Yes, Bob, Bob should be sitting here with me.
But that analysis is not complete because it's not including the cost of taking property, et cetera.
There's, 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 no, there's, there's...
There's items in there.
But, you know, at the end of the day, I feel like this came to us at the last minute and that's really unfortunate. And we don't have a grant from Austining to review. And frankly, you know, you guys have done your due diligence and it's proven to be more of a challenge than I think we can turn around in a week. And it feels like if, and we've also been told from Austining that if we don't join them in this grant, they're not going to submit it on their own, correct?
Correct, so, so...
But can we, are we in a position where we can say, listen, we, we did our best over the course of a week, we did some analysis, we really support this, but we cannot support it and it doesn't seem like you're, Austining, ready to support this at this moment either? Can we have as our goal to do this together next year and to do it right? I mean, I would like to see us really come to the table with Austining on this because I didn't even know you, you were going to these meetings. I didn't even know about the Mogo plan until a week ago. And it feels like I would really like us to be at the table with them. And if their town supervisor is there, if the mayor of the village of Austining is a part of these conversations, I feel like our town board needs to be represented in this conversation, thank you, Robert. I mean, I'd really like to see us take a year to get it right.
So, so let me, I, I understand your comments and I think they're well-founded. The one thing as far as putting this grant together, the budget that you have before you is for the entire length of the, of the sidewalk, you know, they haven't, the only, for the entire, I'm sorry, the entire length of, of the bike lane, okay? The grant components, you know, I shared with you emails of what they asked us to do. We did the budget, they sent us a draft narrative, I shared it with you, I have since edited that narrative. So, there's no other information that Austining needs to...
But we don't know their budget, we've seen your budget, but we haven't seen theirs.
Yeah, we haven't seen a budget that's been done between the two towns.
So the other thing is, is that with the feasibility evaluation, I'm very confused as to why it is that Segment A to Segment C leaves pedestrians on the wrong side of Route 100.
Right, there's no, there's no pedestrians, it's only cyclists who are on the bike lane.
Okay, cyclist doesn't... No, no, so it leaves cyclists on the wrong side of Route 100, having to pass over four lanes of traffic and the entrance to the Tecumseh State Parkway. An intersection that we have begged New York State DOT to at least give us staggered lights to give people an opportunity to pull safely through.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't technically drop them in the middle of the intersection, it drops them at the conjunction of the North County Trailway. It's just unfortunate that the North County Trailway there happens to be at that intersection. So, you know, I, I think part of doing this right is, I think part of doing this right is saying there also has to be improvements at that juncture with the North County Trailway.
So my view is, I'm 100% no. Because I think it's, it's no because they just came to us, we haven't even analyzed as to what makes sense to us. And if we were gonna do this, I would want to see if we can explore some sort of connectivity to Gedney or to the correct side of Route 100 and see how that makes sense. I also think that it's sort of like writing a blank check because we don't 100% know if we're taking property, what it's gonna cost. We haven't talked to any of the residents yet, if they even want to do this. But, but, I'm not 100% no, never, I'm 100% know that you came to us a week before this was due. I'd be willing to explore it, we have to look into this in greater detail. We have to see what we need to add as a town of Newcastle because really it benefits Austining significantly more than it benefits Newcastle. And it's a lot of money and that we haven't even budgeted for.
I'm not sure that it's...
And we're committing to it, I would like to say I'm willing to explore this, we have to work together. Let's look at potentially submitting a grant application in 2019 for 2020, or whenever it makes more sense.
No, I think we should be, I think it's, I have to tell you, I think it's an excellent idea. I think Millwood would absolutely benefit from it. Well, because we didn't participate in it, that's why they didn't include us.
Yes, we did, we've been, we've been at the table the entire time, of course we have. Of course we have.
It has been, it has been the town supervisor. No, no.
But if we've been at the table the entire time, then we would have, would be infuriating.
The last time we met, folks, just to let you know, the last time.
The group met.
The group met, it was in June.
June 20th.
June 20th, I sent Steve Coleman and my assistant Kellen to the meeting. No, 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 but let me, but listen, at that time, it was determined that we were not applying for this grant. Okay, we, it was too soon, that's what was determined. And so I got the call a week ago, I directed the town supervisor in Austin to speak with Newcastle's town supervisor because you guys hadn't even heard about this. That's what happened. And so we progressed because we needed to progress and, you know, Bob Seoli's on vacation right now. I'm going on vacation and when he's back, we're both, you know.
And Dana's on vacation.
And Dana, I mean, so I was just trying to further because I hadn't had direction.
Is there another application date for this tap grant or whatever it's called?
Two years from now.
So two years from now.
Two years.
I think there's not enough analysis done from Newcastle. It would be fiscally irresponsible to commit basically a blank check because if you're saying it's up to $5 million, so one-half of 20% is $500,000 where I got my number, which doesn't necessarily include money to buy back properties. If construction is more than we think it is or there are more environmental impacts than we think there are, we don't know what the number really is.
Right, and let me, let me throw this out here.
And we gave up sidewalks in our downtown, I'd rather spend money on that frankly right now than something that's gonna affect us.
You wanna adopt this?
It's gonna benefit, I mean, it's gonna benefit our town as well because there's economic opportunity that comes from folks coming into Millwood and taking the side path and shopping in our.
Right, but I think.
I agree.
I think a point, a really valid point is that we really need to solve the crossing of the road.
Yes.
Well, I mean, the fact of the, we don't need to argue about this because the fact of the matter is, we don't have anything to approve right now. There is no grant sitting in front of us that we can approve. We're not at a point where they've written something that we can review and submit. I mean, it just feels to me like, you know.
And the person who writes it is on vacation, correct? For Austin. So they're expecting you to do it.
The town clerk wrote a narrative approved by the town supervisor in Austin. I redlined it.
But not a grant application.
But where's their budget? So grant applications today are not like this, okay? You, it's online, you check in the boxes, you fill out your numbers.
But you have to submit a budget, where's their budget?
This, I did this budget. I have not heard back as to whether or not they agree with this budget.
But did you get a copy of their budget?
They didn't do it.
There's nothing to worry about.
So how can they apply for a grant without a budget?
They would use their money on Sabrina.
And plus, and plus, you know, just, I don't think we need any additional information, but all I'd say is, we just had a sidewalk, a conversation about Douglas. Doing a sidewalk feasibility analysis, we're trying to bring people, I mean, which, which, I understand they're different, but they're still, this is driving people, this is still driving people to business districts. And if we're gonna be looking at all these sidewalks or bike paths or anything else that's gonna drive people to the business districts, this should be included in it. And that would be like saying, let's go ahead with Douglas and let's approve 500,000 for, we have no idea what the costs are, we have no idea what the survey is, we have no idea if people are interested. And let's, we send notice to Douglas, why would we possibly even be considering this one?
And we said we don't have enough money to finish what we wanted to do in downtown with the construction with sidewalks, I.
We have no money, they're two separate issues, you can't like.
They're not because it's still coming out of our budget and it's still money that we did not budget for this with an unknown amount of money. So I'm re, I would be really uncomfortable to do this.
But I think it's imperative upon us going forward that we are at the table. And by we, I mean the town board, and I'm happy to volunteer for that.
And since I live over there, I think it would make a lot of sense if I was there.
And nobody's ever even asked us to be at the table.
I've asked to be at the table and I was told that. The town staff should take care of this, so, the beginning when I first brought this application. But I think, I think this is actually a great idea. Austin is exploding at the moment. There's tons and tons of people moving, tons of construction. A lot of it will come down to Millwood, a lot of it.
Yeah, that's the point, and all our paths into the business districts are examined. This one is no different than the one on Douglas. Any path that's gonna bring people, whether it's a bicycle path or walking path, should be examined so that we can allocate the funds based on, you know, just like ahead in front of them.
And I would like some sort of harmonization between your agreement, between the engineers of both towns, that this is what the cost is estimated at for the purposes of grant application. So there's not dueling numbers. And I think that, for example, the original number that Dana Levin put forth, which was our exposure, to get the benefit we would have gotten for Millwood, which was, I think, 200 and something thousand dollars, not the 387, it would be a very inexpensive, um.
I think you're right and I think it could have been, but they didn't actually come to the table with enough analysis for us to be able to make a firm decision.
Well, but it sounds like the last meeting Sabrina even had with them, it was decided we weren't supporting this. So then to do it.
No, 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 so we're going to submit a grant application as a Mogo application. Okay, that was what was decided. And it was said at that meeting, town of Austin, if you're still interested in submitting a grant application, then do it on your own. DOT said to Dana Levinberg, you really need to get Newcastle at the table if you wanna make this happen.
Well, we needed more time and more information.
Well, I just, I need to understand then going forward and, you know, if I can be at the meetings next one, you can let me know, that would be great, but I do think.
I would let the town board know when the Mogo's getting together again.
Okay, and it would be really, really good if Bob Seoling and whoever his equivalent is in terms of the budget development, whether it's DOT, that at some point in it before 2020, when the same period when the grant application is due, that we have a set of numbers that is a shared set of assumptions that both towns feel comfortable with.
So, again, this gets back to a priority of the board.
Okay, we do have two years, so we ought to be able to do this.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and I think, it's two years. And if you need to have feedback from other members of the board, whether they think the idea of a bike lane from Austin, from the riverfront to Millwood, going through the village of Austin, through the town of Austin is a good idea to help you set that priority, we can have that conversation when you do the bike, the plan, November.
I mean, I don't think anybody's saying it's not a good idea. I think we're saying it's premature to commit money to something we haven't analyzed.
Also, I'm curious as to just how much more sidewalks would be, I mean, because they've got sidewalks through almost all of their, they go. Really, ninety, through most of it?
It kinda stops at Camp Wood Road.
I don't understand what sidewalks has to do with this.
It has nothing.
It doesn't, I mean, it's just thinking how much more would a sidewalk cost, what they've done, if they're doing everything.
It adds width. I mean, which is why in some areas, the sidewalk needs to be moved to accommodate a six-foot bike lane.
Right, which, by the way, I mean, that's why I feel, I felt like Segments A and B were more expensive.
They are more expensive, but we're still.
But we don't have that, we don't have that analysis, so.
Listen, are we gonna support this Mogo?
Yeah, we're gonna support Mogo.
And are we gonna support the application with that joint application?
I really like this idea and I really wish we had more than we.
Nobody wishes we had more time, folks, just so, you know, I'm just trying to do what I can.
And I have to tell you, I'm personally a little disappointed because I actually looked at that plan and I thought, damn, this is a really good plan.
It is a good plan.
It's a really good plan. It's not dead, it's just being postponed so we have time to appropriately analyze it.
Two years, it might even be better.
It might be able to accomplish things we need as well.
It's not really fair, the position they took.
2019 is needed, I mean.
A greater than we need.
2019.
Just because it's a good idea doesn't necessarily mean we gotta do it half fast. I mean, they should have given us more time.
Okay. So let's put it on like Kellen's work schedule for, seriously, you know, January 2019 and let him work it through and based on everything, you know.
So they should have given us more time, but I don't think, I don't, we also have, I think, have a bare responsibility, which is I think we need to come to the table with a more full commitment from our town and I would like to see us do that.
But in June, they weren't even interested in this.
Okay, but I have to tell you that they just, they just.
We just heard about it last week.
We're not just hearing about it, Sabrina's been participating in the Mogo plan development, but we, the town board needs to participate in that.
Our town board approved the grant and joined in the grant application that created this. So we were, we have been full partners.
Yeah, we're committed.
They just finalized the, that document, it was just finalized. Austin just approved a date on Tuesday.
But if you look at who's coming to the table from each of the towns, we have had Sabrina and Steve Coleman participating and Austin, the town of Austin and the village of Austin have had their supervisors.
The village of Austin has not had their supervisor, their mayor. And their engineer has not come to the, there's been no engineer coming to the meetings. The people coming to the meetings were two people from our, from the town of Newcastle, two staff people, that has been the town supervisor of the town of Austin and the assistant to the supervisor. And Westchester County, Tracy Corbett, who's no longer with the county, and Sandra Joseph from New York State DOT.
So the town of Austin hasn't been present?
The town of Austin.
Village.
I mean, the village hasn't been present?
The village has not, my understanding is that the town supervisor's office has been update, the town's office has been updating the village's offices.
They talk, there's a chatty group.
Right, I guess my, my point is just, I'd like this to become something that we're checking on, something that someone from the town board is participating in and something that we're being updated on the same way that we're being updated on other projects that are going on it. Okay.
Easy peasy.
Okay.
All right, um, let's see, um, let's just jump back on our agenda. Approval of the lease agreement for medical inflatables, now this is obviously a fun one. So I believe they're doing a giant lung for, um, a community day. So it's just a reimbursement goes through our approval process. We had already approved the authorization to post the position for the Assistant Superintendent of Recreation and Parks. We just didn't actually pass a resolution, so this was just a, uh, an administrative thing. We've got authorization for payment of claims.
Uh, we skipped the Southview Road.
Oh, I'm sorry, Southview Road. The residents right along Reader's Digest Road had asked us, specifically the residents on Southview, had asked us for legislation that would change the no standing signs later there to a no stopping. So as the chief of police explained, the no stopping would prevent people from being there to discharge passengers.
People park there all the time to pick up their kids and drop them off.
Yeah, so that's gonna be on for 9/25 along with the other legislation that Josh talked about earlier today. We, oh yeah, forget it. Monthly reports, we've got employee reimbursement for educational expenses, which is part of our union contract. We've got a revised resolution for insurance renewal. I did not realize that they were to, when they set out their bill, I didn't realize that these two items on the bottom were not included in the subtotal, the $790 and the $1,496. So I was short by just shy of $2,300 on our totals. So I thought this was included in here, it's not. So I'm gonna ask the board for a resolution that will just indicate what those changes are. Um, let's see, what else have we got? We're, we're requesting authorization to extend our purchase of highway maintenance materials. So we do our paving and all that other good stuff. There's another authorization to request for the noise permit for Mount Disco Culture Club. Can, can we just make sure that gets distributed or maybe we need to add a couple of neighbors' emails to their distribution list?
I sent an email to the head of the neighborhood association and said, when you get these emails, because I know the last one was received because I'm also on the board of the neighborhood, and I got it. But I don't think, but he's the one who does the distribution to the neighbors and I don't know that he did. So I sent him an email asking when he gets these, so please just distribute it to the entire neighborhood. It's one email list that he has, so.
We have a request for authorization to, for resolutions in support of a drinking water improvement grant and a sewer improvement grant that Sabrina did. Let's see, oh, CHAP PAC revised facility rules, Lisa, do you want to talk about that?
Sure.
Do we have?
Yeah, no, they're in the package.
Yeah, um, basically, in operating CHAP PAC for the last couple of years, we have just come across things that were in our initial contract when we didn't know better that needed to be changed, that makes sense. We've gone over them with, um, well, John and the other person Keith, who are managing the theater, brought them to us, we've gone over it with town council, there's a red line in here. Nothing that's, I think, crazy.
Yeah, do you want me to, I have a list of changes if you want.
But we're, the, I'm on board with it. The Arts and Culture Committee is on board with it, the management and legal counsel are on board with everything here. So, but we have to have the board approval.
Yeah, so the changes just include some changes to booking, you know, but the reservations can't be made more than 12 months prior to an event. The town reserves the right to limit the number or length of bookings by an individual just to allow for other people to take advantage. Let's see, requirement for security deposit when, before the event is deemed scheduled. Accepting credit cards and the credit card will remain on file. There's no longer a residency requirement that was in the original document, it is no longer in there. Let's see, what is another? Oh, there's another big one is matured content. We're requiring adult supervision for minors if the performance is going to have matured content. We also took out the restriction that food and beverages is prohibited. I guess that's, they wanted to sell food and beverages, so that's okay. We added, originally there was no animals allowed, stage animals are now okay. Some might have a dog, yeah.
It was your mom, we need to know.
You have a costume, literally get a little kid dressed up in a costume.
Yeah, well, and we took out the.
Is that allowed?
There was a line originally that the town reserves the right to modify the permit. We took that out, we, you don't want applicants to be concerned that the town is going to suddenly change their permit. Yeah, and then originally we required them to submit insurance before we issued any permits. We took that requirement out and just changed that, it is strongly recommended. That was a huge issue during discussions, right, about insurance, so we modified that language and.
But what happens if they don't provide it before the event? And we, but the dates, why can't they provide insurance?
Yeah, we keep security deposit.
We keep their security deposit.
But so we cancel the event? Yes, they have to have insurance in order to put on the event, but sometimes if they really need a date and wanna confirm a date and it takes a little longer to go through their insurance company or they submit it and we have, RJ reviews all the insurance documents that come in to make sure they're appropriate. So sometimes if there needs to be a change, it can just take a little longer. But if somebody's planning an event, they need to be able to publicize, so it was just a timing issue.
Right, so those are all the big changes. And then other change, like other red lines you'll see are just for, for changes.
Um, we have an administrative item of Wall Street Rides Bar, it's a bike race that's handled.
Where does that go through town?
Got it. I guess it's our, um.
Okay, well, our train station, maybe?
Yes.
Lauren, can you do a favor, can you just?
They can make it all the way up here.
Yeah, Christina, to come in and just ask her about the Wall Street Rides Bar. Let me see that.
It's super crucial, I'm just curious.
There's flyers in here?
Are we gonna actually do, oh damn.
Are we ready for the?
Oh, and Sustainable Westchester.
So Sustainable Westchester, in 2016, we signed their original memorandum of understanding, which allowed them to go out to bid for compliant bids and competitive suppliers. That pilot program ends this coming December. So they're now asking us to sign a new memorandum of understanding to start the process over again. So the memorandum of understanding outlines kind of what, what is a compliant bid, what are they going to be looking for. It's based on renewable energy sources this time around. The residential, uh, the residential requirement in the compliant bid is based over 12-month average. The small commercial account is based over a 24-month average. Once we do the memorandum of understanding, they'll go out to bid. Once the competitive supplier selected, we'll then sign a 2019 ESA agreement, which is the Electric Service Agreement, which implements the program. We have a law in place that talks about other procedures. So this is just to start the process over again and commits us to signing the 2019 agreement, which there is a draft that was attached to the memorandum of understanding. It's not final, that's obviously going to be further negotiated with the competitive supplier who's selected and reviewed by council before it's signed.
And just like last night, basically goes around to the various towns and the SABs work with the town attorneys, they're sort of dealing with that themselves. They're sort of dealing with that themselves. This collateral collateralation would have been called.
Yeah.
Collaboration.
Collaboration.
Whatever.
Um, but that's.
Collaboration.
Collaboration.
If anyone has any questions.
That's a good idea. Otherwise, we need to approve it because they have to go out to bid.
Yes, it's on a very tight timelines. They have to get it done and meet certain deadlines, so this is just moving it along.
All right.
Got it.
Are we going to go to the other room, sit down to it? We're just going to read it.
No.
We're going to do it in here, but we were going to do a quick, um, it was one more thing I just need to ask you in executive session. Let's talk this.
So can we adjourn the work session and or close the work session and?
Yeah, I'm going to do a quick.
And then we'll just go through the for vice of council.
Okay.
Yeah, this is fine.
I got a second.
A little favor.
Hi.
Hi, I got to move quick here.
All right.
I got to go to the city.
All right.
Okay.
Very quick, very literally speed reading.
Ready? Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome everybody to town board meeting of Friday, August tenth, two thousand eighteen. We're going to just go right on to our any public comments, new businesses, nobody actually here. So we'll go right on to our resolutions.
Do you want to give an administrative update on anything?
Do you want to read something?
It's up to you. I mean, I have a two page report, but I wasn't going to.
Is there anything you'd like to read? No, just the the one twenty sidewalk replacement, Con Ed has finally replaced all of the removed all of the plates. They appear to be done. We are scheduled to start on August twentieth and the work will be done by mid September, mid October, rather.
And is Con Ed paving the street?
They will be paving the street when we're done.
Good.
Okay, otherwise they were, yeah, so they'll do it right after.
It's going to remain like that until October?
That's DOT's whole. It's a mess.
Because that is a mess.
Yeah, I know. I'm going to contact DOT on it, but yeah, I mean, you think that DOT would come in and inspect, but they don't.
It's only going to get worse when you got having buses going up that street every day.
That's right. I just it's shocking to me that they.
Okay.
That they left it in shape. It's terrible.
Um, Con Ed replacement continues on Mark Point in Douglas. And we're hoping that they're going to finish that so we can do our summer paving, which is going to take place in the next couple of weeks. And nine eleven ceremony will take place on nine eleven, six thirty, Skidney Park.
Okay, um, I'm going to go through this. I want to read two pages at a time so we can go through this.
Okay.
Uh, I moved to authorize lease agreement between Newcastle United for Use Two Hundred South Greeley Ave, Chapelone New York Medical Inflatable Exhibit Stakes of Houston, Texas, for a total of six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to provide a mega lung exhibit for Community Day on September fourteenth and September fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
And to confirm, we get reimbursed for that.
And to confirm.
We don't actually, we, yeah, we don't pay for it.
Right, and we don't pay for it.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye. I moved to authorize the posting for hiring of an Assistant Superintendent of Parks of Recreation and Parks within the Department of Recreation.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Uh, this is an authorization to approve purchase of a projector and a monitor for the assembly room. It's to upgrade the assembly room. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle hereby accepts DNR laudatory proposal to upgrade the town projector equipment and A V system. And be it further resolved that the town administrators hereby authorize and direct it to execute all pertinent documents and direct it to take any and all steps necessary to effectuate the purpose of this resolution.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye. I moved to set a public hearing regarding a local law of removing Southview Road from no parking zones, adding an entire length of Southview Road to no stopping zones. The public hearing will be held on September twenty fifth at eight thirty in the Assembly Room of Town Hall. Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to set a public hearing regarding a local law to create chapter ninety five, article two of Town Code for the town of Newcastle concerning real property assessment of converted condominium units. Public hearing will be held also on September twenty fifth at eight thirty in the Assembly Room of Town Hall. Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to adopt payment plans in the amount of.
Um, one million, seven hundred and eleven, two hundred and ninety nine dollars and nine cents.
Okay, listed on the summary, pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detailed report each prepared on.
August ninth.
Checks will be mailed to each claim listed on.
August tenth.
Second.
What teamwork? Little favor.
Aye.
Uh, I moved to accept the following monthly reports for July twenty eighteen, Town Clerk, Court Clerk Development Department and Receiver of Taxes.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
I moved to hire Jason Valvano as a parks laborer within the Parks Department at an annual salary of forty six thousand, three hundred and forty eight dollars and seventeen cents effective August twenty seventh, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to authorize the hire of Linda Ackerman in the tax assessor's office as a part-time employee, working no more than thirty seven and a half hours each pay period at the rate of fifteen dollars per hour. This appointment would be retroactive to July sixteenth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to authorize the reimbursement to Julia Golden for the full cost of tuition, four thousand five hundred and eighty one dollars and books, two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty one cents for two job-related courses with a total cost of forty eight, eleven and sixty one cents.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to approve the revised purchase of casualty and liability policies from Allied World Inc. for the period of August thirty first, twenty eighteen to July thirty first, twenty nineteen. The original approved package amount was three hundred fifty three thousand, seven seventy four dollars and the revised is three hundred fifty six thousand, one hundred and twenty nine dollars and twenty six cents.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
The next is quite a long resolution about funding through the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant Program. So resolve, the town board authorizes its support for the Development Department's request under the twenty eighteen application for the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant Program for improvements to drinking water infrastructure. And be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And the next one is an equally long one, and this has to do with a request for funding through the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant Program for wastewater system repairs and replacement as included in the Chapelone Infrastructure and Streetscape Vitalization Project. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board authorizes its support for the Development Department's request under the twenty eighteen application for the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Grant Programs for wastewater system repair and replacement. Be it further resolved that this resolution will take effect immediately.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
This is an authorization for extension of purchase and installation of highway maintenance materials as outlined in this list here inside the packet. I move to approve the extension of the purchase and installation of highway maintenance materials, DPW twenty sixteen dash oh one, specific items as set forth below through June thirteen, twenty nineteen. The contract pricing items for item seven and ten P from June thirteenth, twenty eighteen to June thirteenth, twenty nineteen have been secured in writing by Chum Chum Supply Corporation.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I move to. This is a resolution about the Ignowit Osning Go Trail Plan adoption. We rewarded a grant study of connectivity and corridors between the towns of Osning and the towns of Newcastle. Whereas the plan has identified potential routes for enhanced bike and pedestrian accessibility as well as recommended next steps for implementation and ways to make Osning and Newcastle more bike and pedestrian friendly. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle hereby adopts the Millwood Osning Go Plan as drafted by the interprenuptious tax force. And be it further resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle agrees to take step towards implementing the recommendation plan as is practical and feasible.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to approve the request for a noise permit on behalf of Mount Kisco Culture Club for Saturday, September first, twenty eighteen, for project events to help, that is being held outside. Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to grant Wall Street Rides F A R charity cycling event permit for cyclists to travel through the town of Newcastle. This event will take place on Saturday, October thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Second.
Little favor.
Ivy, this is eighteen.
This is a resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding of Sustainable Westchester. Whereas the town wishes to continue its participation in the community choice aggregation pilot program, which expires on December thirty first, twenty eighteen. Therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby authorizes the town supervisor to execute the memorandum of understanding of Sustainable Westchester submitted here with and further incentive the town of Newcastle's participation in the CCA program. And be it further resolved that the town board hereby authorizes the town supervisor to execute the twenty nineteen Energy Service Agreement and the form attached to this resolution as Exhibit One. Subject to further modification and approval by the town attorney in the event that Sustainable Westchester receives a bid that satisfies the conditions and the pricing requirements in the memorandum of understanding. Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I moved to approve implementation of a form for use of the Chapelone Performing Arts Center attached tier two.
Second.
To be a date.
Dated today.
Yep.
Dated today and attached tier two. Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
The town board awards bid DPW twenty eighteen dash oh five for office cleaning contract to the next lowest responsible bidder, Quality Facility Solutions Corp., for the monthly amount of four thousand, one hundred and ninety three dollars and seventy one cents and option items in accordance with submitted bid. Services performed under the contract shall begin September first, twenty eighteen, October first, twenty eighteen. The reason we didn't do the lowest responsible bidder was their insurance policy requirements could not be met.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Aye. And I move to accept a word proposal for the operation of taxi services at the Chapelone Culture Train Station at Memorial Plaza Two Pleasantville Taxi. Is that the full name?
I don't have it. I don't have it. I mean, I think it is.
Yeah.
I was dealing and she just got a couple of things to add.
Oh.
Yeah, Pleasantville Taxi for a period of one year.
Yeah.
The town board hereby authorizes the town supervisor to execute a contract for such taxi services, including schedule, passenger rates, annual rental fee, hours of operation in other areas subject to review and approval by the town attorney.
So moves.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye. Aye.
She wrote that in.
I'm going to send it to you.
Is that it?
What what is the official name of Pleasantville Taxi?
I can double check.
We'll find it.
I would to close the meeting.
Second.
Little favor.
Aye.
Okay, our next.